Welcome to Curtis High School for this Candidates Forum for University Place City Council, Positions Three and Four. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and University Place, I'm happy to see you here. I'm Liz Kernitz-Thurlo. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, and I will be the moderator. The timekeeper is Ann Williams. She's sitting down in front so the candidates can see her. The League -- excuse me about -- my voice just went away. The League is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League. Since 1920, we've been providing information on issues and the positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the process. Conducting forums like this is one of the ways we encourage informed and active participation. Your participation today helps us carry out that mission. Thank you for coming. To television viewers, thank you for watching. If you have an interest in being involved in the process, the League of Women Voters welcomes members, and not just women. Pick up a membership brochure outside the door, talk to me after the forum, or call the League at (253) 272-1495. This forum is being recorded for later television broadcast. I would ask that all other recording devices be turned off, as well as all telephones or anything else that's going to beep or ring. No parts of this forum should be used in any candidate literature or advertising, and use of the League name is not authorized. That's one that should go off. Ground rules were sent to candidates. Questions will primarily come from you, the audience. Questions should be submitted on index cards. If you wish to write a question, signal for a card, and someone will come find you and give it to you, and then give it back to the card collector. Laura Gardner of the League is helping me by sorting the questions. I will use what's appropriate, possibly combining and rewording. I will decide how much time is available to answer each question. The ultimate decision on questions asked is mine. Questions get answered by all four of the men seated up here. If you have a question that is specifically directed at one candidate, it will not be asked unless there is a way of making it more general. So if you can, word your question so that it is appropriate for everybody to answer them. All candidates get equal time to answer all the same questions, with one exception, which I'll talk about in a minute. The order of answering will rotate. Before we do the questions, each candidate will have 90 seconds in which to make an opening statement. At the end, each candidate may have one minute to make a closing statement. Each candidate has also been asked to prepare one question for his opponent. The person who has asked the question will have 60 seconds to answer it. The asker may then have 30 seconds in which to respond to the answer. The timekeeper will signal you when there's one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds, and when it's time to stop speaking. When you see the stop, you may finish your sentence, and thank you for understanding. Okay. We're hearing from the candidates for Council Positions Three and Four. All candidates are in attendance, which is great. Positions One and Five are also up for election, and the incumbents in those positions have no challengers for their seats, so the decision was made to have only the contested seats here this evening in order to allow more time to hear their views, similarities, and differences. The candidates for Position Three are Steve Worthington and Eric Chenier. For Position Four, the candidates are Ken J. Grassi and Carl J. Molnow. We are seeing all of them for the entire forum, and as I said, the order of answering questions will rotate. The first candidate to answer each question will rotate down the row, will then have the questions they have prepared for each other, and then we're going to go back down in the reverse order. So each candidate now has one and a half minutes to make an opening statement, and we will begin with Mr. Worthington.
Very good, and thank you. Good evening. I have to say, it's great to see people here. One of my concerns was that we would have fewer folks, and it would be actually a little more difficult. So thank you for coming. I appreciate that very much. University Place needs effective leadership and vision on its city council. The Town Center project is moving forward but is yet to be completed. There's a demand for police services that can't be answered yet. There's demand for other services that we don't have the resources to address yet. There's change happening in our neighborhoods as we're working through those. Your council is where those solutions are found. I've determined and found solutions for councils around the state. As a former city manager, as a community development director, I've worked in local government for 25 years, and I've helped councils find the solutions they need to be effective in their decision process. I'd like to be able to do that here in University Place, where I live and have lived with my wife and my sons for the last 14 years, where I can use my skills and my education. I have a master's in public administration, a bachelor's in speech communications, to help you, help us, and help the council work to find the solutions that we need to move forward. I hope that you'll, at the end of this debate, consider voting for me favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. I want to first thank the League of Women Voters for putting on tonight's forum. I want to thank you and the audience that are here, and I also want to thank you at home who are watching tonight's forum. You know, four years ago, statements were made about our city situation. The comments I heard was, "UP has gone bankrupt. Town Center is a failure, and we need to give it away at any cost. The budget is broken, and massive cuts need to be done, and we need to scuttle our laws to get business growth happening." Rather than listening to voices of fear, I helped lead the way for smart, responsible decisions on the budget. Now our budget is stronger than ever than when it started. We kept the vision of Town Center but reinforced, refocused our efforts. Now the library's reopened, we have our first business in Town Center, and over $30 million recently in private investment has happened on just one lot, with much more to come. We did not have to remove ordinances for business growth. Instead, we made some changes to help support new and future developments around the city, and I wanted to make sure we're still protecting our residential neighborhoods. I've lived in University Place for over 20 years. I believe communities are strong when we're involved with it. I have never missed a council meeting, and I've always been involved in our city before and while I've been on council, long before I decided to run for office. I feel if you're not involved, how can you understand the dynamics of what makes a community great? I still want to be your council member for the next four years, and University Place is getting stronger. We need to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi.
Well, first, may I say thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event tonight, and thank you to the citizens of University Place for allowing me to serve on your city council for the past 18 years. I've lived in University Place, served in University Place, and volunteered in this city for the past 28 years, and it's been a wonderful experience. I'm proud to say that our crime rate remains low because we've got a very dedicated police team. We've significantly reduced debt, and we've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest rates by refinancing that debt at historic-low interest rates. We've maintained city services. We've kept parks and open spaces and trails, city events alive and well in a challenging economy, because these are the things that you told us were very important to you. Our city staffing level is one of the lowest in the state for comparative cities, and our finance department, once again this year, as it has many, many times in the past, won national awards. After 18 years on the city council, I can tell you that I wouldn't trade my experience for anything. It's been wonderful to serve you, to work with you, and to be part of what's happening in University Place, but the best is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molnow.
Hello. My name is Carl Molnow, and I've lived in University Place for 43 years. And some of the problems that we first had in University Place is not getting enough services from the county, so about 19 or 20 years ago, people got together and decided to maybe make a city out of this little spice here. So I got involved, spent a couple hundred hours, and ran for the first city council. And the first city council decided that we were actually going to get more services and things like that. But the city has been going in the wrong direction since we became a city. We opened up our credit card and started buying all these really ridiculous things like, first of all, wanting to put roundabouts down the middle of Bridgeport and all these other little things. We've become a great landscaping project here. We've got trees going down the middle of the street where the businesses on either side can't see each other, the people coming down these streets can't see the businesses. Therefore, many of the businesses are not here anymore. And even though some of these other people who have been on the council for all these years say that it's going a good way, it can't be going in a good way when we owe, for the next 24 years, $50 million plus interest. So what are we paying each month for interest based on that 6% that we're probably paying right now, between 5 and 6%? We're paying $250,000 a month in interest. Now, that can't be too good. And if we're going in the right direction, why are we paying so much money in interest and saying that we -- is that the end? Okay. Carl Molnow, thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, so we're moving down, so Mr. Chenier will answer the first question first, and then we go down and around. University Place has relied on citizen volunteerism, especially during times of budget shortfalls. Since you have lived in University Place, what has been your volunteer service? And 60 seconds for answers.
Sure. Before I was on council, I actually coached baseball with the UP Parks, coached outside of UP Parks with UP Youth for one of the Pony League teams. I served on the Parks and Rec Commission. We had, I think, I can't even think of amount of parks that I volunteered time in to go clean up, which is a wonderful thing, you should go do it, too. I have spent time meeting with residents at many different events around the community. National Night Out, I've spent time out to meet residents. I have really found that spending time in the community, you get to have that one-on-one. I just had a person the other day I'd met at a park event, and she had a concern about her neighborhood. I sat down with her, listened to what she had an issue with, and I went out to try to see if we could find some answers. That's what getting involved in the community is about, listening to the people, doing things in the community, and learning more as you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi.
Thank you. Well, volunteerism in University Place, I'm happy to say, is alive and well, and it's great to be a part of it. I have been actively involved as a volunteer since in Corporation. Worked on the Daffodil Festival, worked on the Daffodil floats for many years. I've chaired the Treasures in the Park event for many years. Worked on the city Christmas tree lighting event and festival, our annual plant sale that we have every spring. I am a member of the Homestead Park Committee that oversees the Homestead Park next to City Hall. I've worked very hard over the years on city beautification, and we've raised tens of thousands of dollars. So a lot of the things that you see aren't coming from your tax dollars, but they're coming from citizens like yourselves that have given so generously over the years. But it's, when you're out volunteering, you meet great people, you have great experience, and it's just, it's a part of serving your city. I love it. I enjoy every bit of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molnow.
Hello. Again, Carl Molnow here. As far as my volunteering in the city, my three sons went to school here at Curtis, and my major volunteering was with the school system. Whenever my sons and their classes went to different events, I did some chaperoning. When we had the big oil spill out there at the ocean and all the birds were full of oil, I volunteered as a bus driver, which I did, drove the bus down there and to many other little functions during those years, since I'm a certified bus driver and driver in many other things. Anyhow, worked with the community council. I was an elected member of that, worked with that in all their different functions and trying to get more services and went, spent a lot of time going to the county council, before it was a county council, and trying to get problems solved with the water system, which I was a main function, and getting that started with another gentleman who was hydraulic engineer. The water system got going basically because of our start when we had a major problem, our water was contaminated with oil and other things. Thank you, Carl Molnow.
Mr. Worthington.
Thank you. My volunteer efforts here in University Place include working with PTSA, where we've been a member, my wife and I, for 14 years. Also, I'm a member of the University Place Historical Society. There's other activities I've been involved in, such as Rotary. 25 years of Rotary membership, I'm a past president for a Rotary club. I've also been involved within, in the case of park cleanups, having done that for a series of years with the City of Fife cleanup efforts. And volunteerism is an important part of being active in any community. You do learn a good deal from it, and you get so many rewards. Some of those things, for me, have also involved working in the scouting program with Boy Scouts of America. I was a pack treasurer when my kids were of an age when that was what the family did, and those are some of the examples of some volunteer efforts that I've been involved in. Thank you.
Thank you all. I just need to say that this audience is amazing. I have never seen questions come in like this. Usually, it's, "Please write questions." Well, we've got a lot, so I'm going to put some together. So now you have a minute for two related issues, and I actually believe these questions came from the same person. And Mr. Grassi will answer first. Two A is, do you support a living wage for all workers in University Place, which would be higher than the state's minimum wage? And part B is, do you support requiring employers of all workers in University Place to provide a minimum amount of paid sick leave?
Thank you.
Could you repeat that second one, please?
After Mr. Grassi answers.
Okay, first part of that, do I support a living wage? And that's an interesting question, because I have been in retail and own retail businesses, and so I am probably from the old school on this issue. I believe that there needs to be entry-level positions for young people to get started. I don't believe that a starting job should be just that. It should be a time to grow, to gain experience, and to move up the ladder. So I would not support a living wage, starting living wage in University Place. As far as supporting sick leave, I think that has to be up to the individual employer, whether they can afford that or not. I think there's a lot of uncertainty right now with what's happening with healthcare, and so until a lot of those questions get answered and people have a full and better understanding of how that's going to work, I would say at this time that would have to stay on the table until we have a better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Molnow, the first half is about a living wage for all workers, and the second half is about requiring employers to provide a minimum amount of paid sick leave.
Okay. The living wage, a living wage is basically a misnomer. Living wage should be that you, as a young person, you go out and you get some experience. You go through school, you get your training, or you get your education. Then you need training to get a living wage. Now, if you go out and expect $15 or $20 an hour from the start, that's not a living wage for the people who are providing the jobs, like Mr. Grassi here. You need to go out, learn how to do something, get some experience, get some training, and that's your living wage. You make your own living wage based on the knowledge and the experience and the training that you have. If you don't have that, and you can't make it living, then you ought to make sure you get off your dead butt and go do something to get that. If you don't, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
Thank you. With regards to a living wage, certainly I want our community members to have a living wage, but requiring that is not something that I would support. The state has a, one of the highest minimum wage rates in the nation. It's workers work hard, and they earn that money, but they also earn an opportunity to move forward. I used to be a small business person. I used to have two restaurants in Spokane at various times that I owned, and in that environment at that time, understood how important the wage rates were. I also understood what it took to get and retain valuable employees. And that's a host of different activities, a host of different benefits that may or may not include sick leave, but might include other ways to address their needs. That's really what I think is key, is understanding your business, your employee base, and being able to work forward it. As a small business person, as a person who owned a business and has experienced running businesses, I believe that a living wage is not something that should be dictated from the local office.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. You know, that's been a long, tough question to ask. You know, one of the things I heard is on a living wage, well, $15 an hour. And that, basically after taxes, that works out to about $2,000 a month. And I'll be honest, I don't know of a lot of people that they could barely get by on that with this economy. And what I would say, rather than say we need a living wage, what we need to do is have people support them to go back to school, get the extra education they need, so that way they can get the higher-paying jobs. You know, in this day and age, I mean, I can say this, under the $10 an hour, you know, I'll tell you right now, in a family, even if you're not married, you would have to work two jobs just to get by. So I don't know if there is ever going to be that magic number. As far as paid sick leave, again, it's a great thing, but I would like to see, I would like to see more employers offer it. I don't really want to see yet city government dictating that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Molnow is first on the next question. Some cities have allowed or encouraged strip malls, car sales lots, and casinos to bring in sales taxes. What is your vision of what will and should make cash registers ring in University Place?
Well, in University Place, we obviously need more businesses, because we have a lot of businesses, just one other business, the Italian restaurant, for instance, another Asian restaurant, another business. We need to allow the businesses, if they need a drive-through, to give them a drive-through. There's a Burger King over here can barely make it, that they wouldn't not, the city would not let them do a drive-through. What's wrong with a drive-through? This is 2013, not 1945. We even had drive-throughs or drive-ins in 1945. We got to get real there. Businesses need support from the city, and if the city doesn't allow these things to happen because we're so uppity yuppity and just, what? We got this big landscaping deal, we can't have this, we can't have a car sitting there going through the drive-through. We need to allow our city to work with businesses and not have this traffic impact fee. What a traffic impact fee is? We want more traffic to get, to support the business, and then we charge them more to start with? This is just plain stupid, and this should not occur. If we're going to continue that, we're not going to get any more businesses. We're going to have big businesses, and that's it. Carl Molnow, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
I think it's important that whenever we're looking at what's allowed or isn't allowed in a community, that the community itself has a voice in that process, that you help decide what is right for University Place in the course of developing zoning and regulations that go with it. The other challenge, though, is, while that is being done, it's important to keep in mind that you also are going to want to have police officers and parks and the other things that make a community a community. To have that balance, you need to be able to generate revenue, and figuring out where that center point is, is the opportunity and the challenge that we have on council. So that's, who gets to make the decision, but it's only with your input, and we need to hear, as a council member, listening to you to see what you would like in that setting. The real vision here, though, is how to use the opportunities of Town Center, and we have other, I think, even greater opportunities elsewhere in the community to grow our business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. You know, when I came on council, that was the first thing I heard, well, we're not business-friendly, we're not friendly to our businesses, we're not helping out. And what we did is, rather than scuttle out ordinances, we went in and did some changes. We did changes to traffic impact fees. We not only lowered them, we gave incentive to businesses that create sales tax revenue that reduces or eliminates a traffic impact fee for them. We changed the process of permitting. We changed, I can go on and on, of things that we have done. We have gone out and, just to show some of the input or some of the things we've done, there's going to be a shag building going down on 27th and Grandview. It's going to have residential on top, retail on the bottom. We've got a new business that's in green firs that's going to have more businesses coming into it. That's from changes. We did do changes to drive-through ordinances south of Town Center, but quite frankly, we have done a lot of changes in the last four years, and I'm very proud of the changes we have done.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi.
Well, we have, and Eric, you touched on that, and I would just have to agree that we've worked hard on zoning changes, because we, again, we heard from you that drive-throughs were important. And so the prime example of that is the new Starbucks, and so we have opened up drive-throughs in parts of Town Center, and we did revise the traffic impact fees to be much more user-friendly, much more business-friendly, because we want to encourage business. We are, we are open for business, and we want that to be the message in the community. We're not a community, I don't believe, for a casino, and there are places for that, and obviously, they're very popular. I don't see car lots in University Place as well. We don't have the zoning for that. We don't have the property for that. If you read today's paper, the sale this weekend, you can go to the Wallop in Puyallup. But I think, you know, we're looking for quality retail businesses that can keep the dollars in University Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we come to the time when the candidates ask each other their questions. The person asked will have 90 seconds to answer, because these must be important, because you know to ask your opponent. The asker may then have 45 seconds in which to respond to the answer. So, Mr. Worthington, your question for Mr. Chenier, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier, I'd like to ask you, if you could tell us how the maximum non-voted debt is calculated for the City of University Place, and also, where is the city in that debt?
That's fine. Mr. Worthington, right now, we have been paying down our debts at this time. We were, we were in a point that, you know, we were at about $52 million of debt level. We have actually been paying that down, and we actually went out and refinanced one of our loans, because this was very important. It was very important that we did not, it was a balloon payment, we wanted to make sure we got it done on time. We will have our debts paid off. We are paying our debts off on time. And I'll tell you right now, I am extremely happy of the hard work we've done to make sure we did a sound, smart, stable budget, and not gone out like some people wanted to do and gut everything in the budget just to pay off debt, or fire a bunch of people just to pay off debt. We made the smart decisions, and I'm very proud of what we've done.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington, do you want to respond?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chenier, thank you for the response. The fact is, the question was how the debt is calculated, and the debt is 1.5% of the assessed valuation of the city. That's your maximum non-voted debt. In the case of University Place, the city is at its maximum capacity. There is no additional capacity to borrow money in the city of any, of any note. The result is, we're, have no way to deal with financial emergencies here, and we need to find a way to deal with those, because emergencies will come. They are a challenge. We've, we've really have mortgaged our future in one particular area. Now, that isn't any one person's doing, but the reality is, we need to live with that, but we also need to fix that.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier, your question for Mr. Worthington, please.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington, you left the City of Fife and announced your retirement in 2011. While still being city manager, you then applied to be the city manager of Lacey in 2011 and Yakima in 2012. Mr. Worthington, why did you apply to be city manager in other cities if you decided to change your mind and not just rescind your retirement and continue with Fife?
Well, to begin with, your facts are wrong. I was not city manager of Fife at the time I applied for the city manager of Lacey. Not that that's a large point, but you don't have it right. The reality, or the fact is, I had worked with the City of Fife for 14 years. I had Bennett's Community Development Director, I had Bennett's Manager, and I had achieved some, I believe, good things. I had also negotiated some very good labor contracts that were getting back money, that were refunding on some necessary costs that we had in healthcare. And at the same time, we were able to negotiate, or rather, recraft a budget in 2008, working with the council very closely, and taking on some tough early decisions that involved layoffs when we needed to. It was a tough time, but in 2010, when I gave notice, it was nine months later that I left Fife. I gave a nine-month notice, and I challenge anyone here to suggest that that isn't an adequate notice. As to why, I was looking for my next set of challenges, and I decided that I'd done most of what I needed to in Fife, and I was looking for that next opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier, do you have a response?
Yes, absolutely. And that's, that's wonderful, Mr. Worthington, but I think you left off some other things. The one thing is, when you left as the city manager of Fife, the last budget you had was balanced on one time was balanced on one-time payments, one-time tribe payments. The other thing, too, is that you're, you're, and you can shake your head, but that's the fact, I got that information directly from people in contact in Fife. The fact is also, is that your, is when you had left, the new, the new city manager came in, had to go back and was left with a, with a major problem with the next year's budget because it was balanced so badly with one-time payments. And because of that, they had to do some major cuts and major rebalancing just to get a balanced budget. And that's a part of being a city, is being the city council, is to make sure that the budgets are balanced and the budgets are done correct, as we've done the last few years smartly and correctly.
Um, I'm neglected to say at the beginning that if you ever need to rebut a question, signal to me, you may have 30 seconds, and then the person you're rebutting can have 15 seconds back.
Again, the facts are wrong. That was not one-time money from the tribe, that was a contract the tribe of, uh, the Puyallup tribe had with the city of Fife, that was ongoing and continued to be paid. The city may have had other financial challenges, but it was budget, the balance, the budget was balanced, it was done carefully, and it was done appropriately at the time I left. Thank you, but that's, your facts, again, are just flawed.
Well, that's your, that's your opinion, Mr. Worthington, but that's the facts I got directly, directly from, um, the people I talked to in Fife. And the fact was, the budget was balanced on one-time payments from the tribe when it was, that's not responsible.
Okay, thank you both. Um, I would ask for, the audience gets to applaud at the very end, and in the meantime, I would like no noise. And I had asked for all, um, anything that can record or anything that is going to make noise to please be turned off. Okay. Mr. Grassi, do you have a question for Mr. Moll now? And I hope these do not get quite as seemingly personal.
Carl, what I, I would like to ask you, the city is currently, uh, starting strategic planning for the next 10 to 15 years. So can you tell us, uh, what you see, where, where do you see University Place in the future, in the next 10 to 15 years? Where will we be? How are we going to get there?
Well, if we don't change our direction, uh, right now, uh, we're going to be in deeper debt than we're in right now. What we need to do is not spend any more money. We've got all these plans of putting more streets and more, and all this brings in more money. So right now, our debt paid off, the $50 million is in 24 years. Well, if you keep adding money to that, it's going to take a lot longer than 24 years and going to have more money, going to be paying more interest. We have to pay down the debt, we have to quit making all these projects, and we're dancing with dollars. We've got so many people over there, we've got assistance to the assistance to the assistance, we're just figuring how to move this money around. We have to stop, uh, buying new things we don't have. I've lived here for 43 years, and for the first 20 years, uh, we didn't have all these new streets and all these things, that were just waste of money, actually putting impediments in the middle of the street so that the people can't even see the, uh, businesses on the other side. We have to stop spending so much money, we got to pay down the debt, we got to get rid of some of the people who are really not doing anything over there except dancing with the dollars. And we have a big problem with, uh, permits. My house is destroyed basically by the scrubs at the city of University Place by allowing people, uh, to come in and, uh, to work on, around our house as well, the permit, and asphalt patch systems did that. What they did is they broke my water pipe, and then they sent the police over, you did, the city of University, they sent the police over to let me not fix it, and then I was even assaulted by a police officer, and you were there, you heard it on the telephone what one of the police officers said to me, that we want to take you out, we want, Carl Moll, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi, do you have a comment?
Uh, well, my recollection of that conversation was, when I did talk to the police officer, it was because you were out jackhammering the street trying to put a sewer line in. But, um, I want to make a couple of, of corrections. You stated earlier about the, um, interest rate that the city is paying per year, where actually the interest rate is $100,000 a year, or the interest on the loans that we have. Is that a large amount of money? Yes, and of course, I wish it could be less, but it's not 250,000. As I said earlier, we have the lowest staffing of any comparative city in the state of Washington. We are mean and lean by any comparison. And the streets, um, I love all the street improvements, and most of those dollars are state and federal grants, that it's still tax dollars, but wouldn't you rather have those tax dollars spent in University Place rather than somewhere else? Thank you.
Okay, um, before Mr. Moll now asks a question, I'd like to remind the candidates that we were told that squashing your hands down on the table is very hard on the microphones, and that it's going to be noisy for people listening, and it is for people listening here. So try not to, I know it's hard. Mr. Moll now, your question for Mr. Grassi, please.
Well, I'd like to answer what he just was talking about, he said he was, uh...
Well, first ask him a question, please. You get, you get to ask him a question now, and if you want to comment...
So I don't get a response to what he said, which was not factual based on the fact that he was...
Okay, all right, you're requesting a rebuttal, fine.
Yes, I'd like a rebuttal.
30 seconds, 15 for response from Mr. Grassi.
Okay, you said I was replacing a sewer line. No, the city allowed asphalt pesters to break my water line without a permit, and I was doing a bypass of my water pipe that leaked for five months because the city would not allow me to even fix it or do a bypass. That was it, I needed clean water to my house, which you didn't have for five months. And you were listening to a police officer who came over and assaulted me after I got a permit to fix my water pipe that it didn't, no one needed a permit to break. And you listened to that police officer, and I told you that it was just assault, they broke out four of my teeth, gave me a concussion, injured my right shoulder, my right, and you did nothing. You did absolutely nothing to...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grassi, 15 seconds if you want it.
Well, it, like I said earlier, it would be a difference of opinion. First of all, I, as mayor at that time, um, I have no control over the police department. I did talk to the officer who was at the house, and it was a, a different story, is what I heard. So I, you know, whatever you're stating, if it's factual, uh, but that's not the story that I heard at the time.
Okay. Mr. Moll now, your question for Mr. Grassi, please.
Actually, the question that I have is the answer that we already gave, same question is, why did you do nothing? The, the facts were there, there were seven witnesses, which none of the, you didn't talk to, no one talked to, and I'd like to know why you did nothing, even though they broke out four of my teeth, and you didn't even bring this up. You allowed this police officer to assault me, of there were many witnesses, and you did nothing. In fact, your, your police chief threatened me, he said, "We're going to take you out", and he told me, he says, "You better keep your mouth shut about this, uh, if you know what's good for you," unquote. Jim Andrews.
You've asked the question?
That's the question. I want to know why you didn't, uh, do anything about the fact that, uh, the, the police officer came and assaulted me and did, and did absolutely nothing about it. And this is continued, I talked, other people had the same problem.
Mr. Moll now, we've heard the question, now please let him answer.
The question, go ahead.
Well, I do recall the conversation, in fact, it was in December, I remember that very clearly. I did ask to talk to the chief at that time, and he came on the phone, and I asked him to please relay to me what was going on. He stated to me that they were called, uh, by the neighbors who stated that you were jackhammering the street, trying to maybe not install a sewer line, I stand corrected on that if I was wrong, but that you were trying to repair the water line on your own, which is against, of course, city code and city ordinance and without permits. Um, I recall that you did ask me to do something, but as council members, and at that time as mayor, you know, that's not something that we can do.
Rebuttal.
Okay. You may have 45 seconds if you need it, Mr. Moll now.
Yes, the rebuttal is that it, it was the water line that was broken, and I did have a permit from the city. In fact, I even informed the police and the city, I did my, I did my, son did, and my wife did. And I had the permit, the city did, in fact, they even came to me and said that I printed out this permit on my own. Well, I did, it, it, it was printed on the city's computer, and he said, um, it looked like it was fake. Well, it wasn't fake, I had the permit, you did nothing.
Okay.
And I paid for the permit, the people that broke it didn't pay for anything because they have free rein.
Thank you. Um, would you all believe that sometimes when I have candidates ask each other questions, it doesn't get like this at all? Okay, so, we're going back to audience questions now, and we're turning it around. So Mr. Moll now will answer first, and we go down the table that way. Now, I've put this one because I do not live in University Place. I've lived here for 12 years, I started moderating forums here maybe 10 years ago, and there were always questions about the town center. There used to be questions about, are we ever going to have one? Um, this one says, "How would you cut costs of the town center and the new city hall?" One minute.
To cut costs in the town center and the new city hall? Well, we don't have any money, so there's nothing to cut, if you don't have any money to do it in the first place. First of all, we have to get the money to do this. So right now, we can't do a thing. So the town center, you have to sell the land, sell the land and let people, some other businesses who actually know how to run a business and, and are in the construction business or the development business, which the city isn't, and we became a development, uh, city, and we don't know what the hell we're doing because there's nobody that has ever done any of that sort of stuff. So we got some bunch of idiots and they're doing something they know nothing to do. So you have to sell this property, you're going to lose money, and then let the city center take it on its own because the money that we make, we're not going to make any money, I'm going to have to pay that money that we get back to get the debt down. We're in big trouble here, and nobody on the council seems to understand or tell you, they're afraid, they can't, they just can't stand the truth, they can't, uh, address the truth, and it's just ridiculous that they can't tell you every damn day that we're in trouble. Thank you.
Mr. Grassi.
Town center, um, has been a topic in this community now for, uh, seven, eight years. And was the timing impeccably horrible when we started? Yes, it was. The economy tanked, we all know that story. But it's coming alive. Uh, a new building now on the other side of the civic building will start in November, the final parking garage is going to be completed, 160 more living units, another 22,000 square feet of retail. But what's more important than that is, uh, there's an anticipated announcement, and we wish we could share that with you, but it'll be coming in November, of, um, will be our major anchor that we have been waiting for, and there's a lot of people that will follow. But with that, the, uh, private investment for the first time in the project will exceed the public investment. That was the plan from the beginning. It's working, it will succeed, and you will see in the next two years, that will become a hustle-bustle area of town. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. Well, Ken kind of stole part of my thunder, thank you, Ken.
My pleasure.
Yeah, you're welcome. Right now alone, in two of the lots, is $45 million of private investment. Now, you'll hear people tell you, "We put $50 million of taxpayer money into town center." We've already got $45 million, that's on two lots. We've got a business inside the civic building. We are already planning to start moving some things over eventually, but we did it responsibly. It made no sense to go in and strip out a budget and take away services from one of the areas just to move the staff over. We're going to make the smart decisions, we're going to make the right decisions, but we're not going to turn around where we had one person came up and offered us a ridiculous low price on a couple of our prime lots just to sell property. That's irresponsible. And I'm very proud of the work we've done the last four years of moving town center forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
Thank you. The town center project is, been, it's been an all-in bet for this community, and we're all riding on that bet. It's important, though, that it goes forward and has as much success as possible, and I don't want to do anything and won't do anything to impede that. The fact of, uh, the potential of moving city hall there remains to be seen. Uh, there's a number of things that have to be done first before that, uh, is really a viable, uh, alternative for us. And as what those costs are going to be, I think that's also, uh, quite a roll of the dice at this particular juncture. Hopefully, indeed, the, uh, we have a major tenant coming, and I would look forward to hearing the details of that announcement. And I really hope it is everything that it needs to be for us. Uh, it, uh, it is a, an all-in bet, but we're there to, we're there at sunk cost, and we're going to see if we can't get everything we possibly can out of that.
Thank you. Um, the next question partly deals with town center again, and I'm putting two together. Mr. Grassi will answer first. "One of the original concerns when University Place was incorporated was to have some control over the growth of apartment complexes. The town center is building another apartment complex. How will more apartments influence density and quality of life in University Place?" And while you're sneaking in on your minute you get on this, "How do you prioritize city economic issues versus neighborhood quality of life concerns?" And do you think you need 90 seconds rather than 60?
Sure, that would be appreciated.
We'll give him 90.
Okay. Um, that's a great question, and that has been something that has been a concern in this community, uh, prior to incorporation. Do we want more apartments? Uh, it's always been the council's goal, and it certainly will remain, and that is to protect the neighborhoods, the quality of the neighborhoods, it's something that's very important to this community. The particular living units that have been built and just opened, and they're leasing quite well, um, were built to condo quality. The reason they weren't condos to begin with is because, again, of the economy and the downturn in the market. But that doesn't mean in the future that those units can't be sold. Uh, the new building that'll be under construction in November will be done at that same quality, and the same, uh, builder, it's a local builder, has now asked for an option for Lot 12 across the street on Bridgeport, uh, for yet another project that would be condos. So we are moving in the right direction. I think that everyone would agree that the quality that you can see, and if you're able to go in the building and take a look, you would be very pleased at how beautiful they are, the no shortcuts, beautiful finishes, something that the community can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. You know, I remember when the city first started, that was the biggest concern, was the tracks of apartments and being unattractive. The big thing that Ken already had talked about, which was the quality of what's being built in town center right now. These are condo quality, and he is right. Had the market not tanked, those would be sold as condos. But I have seen the inside of these, I've seen the looks, these are excellent quality living spaces. Town center has always had the vision of the walkable community. And when town center is complete, and we have that walkable area, I would not be surprised. If you go north on Bridgeport and 35th, or south of town center, there's going to be a push by developers to either revitalize the lots they have or buy them and build new properties. It is going to happen. But this was always a part, when we decided to have the town center, to centralize our growth, to keep it in there and protect the residential neighborhoods. That's why when we had a developer came in and they wanted to buy one of the lots and put a drive-through at a pharmacy, I fought against it. Because I, I knew, if you put that in there, it's going to cause a noise problem right in the neighborhood, right next door, and you would have to build a big Jericho wall to stop that from happening. So I am very proud of the work we've done at town center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
Thank you. Um, I, I believe that a, a community is made up of many different kinds of people, uh, different economic strata as well. I think it takes a mix of different housing styles. Uh, and the fact that it's a multifamily project done with high quality is not something that is a negative, in my view. Density is necessary in certain parts of the community. In the town center area, it's very appropriate, in my view. Uh, you need to have that activity, you need to have the, the people there, you have a transit plan that also accommodates it, it's well-located. That's not talking about a mass, uh, array of apartments springing up on every corner of this community, far from it, but rather you cluster it as has been done. I actually think the design of the project is, is a reasonable approach, the density provided is important for the economic center, uh, and, uh, it also helps provide for the transportation system that can move people out of cars. That's also a, a positive that comes out of this. So, uh, those are my responses.
Thank you. Mr. Moll now.
Yes, uh, I was one of the people, when, uh, I haven't lived here for 43 years, when we were building all those apartments, that we actually changed the name of University Place to Apartment Place. But with these new condos or new apartments, I already want to talk, they are upscale, these are not the people that are, want us to give them a living wage.
These are not the people that are, want us to give them a living wage. These people have already got their education, their training, and are making a living wage plus, so they're, they're a much better deal. So if them living there is fine, the only problem that I have with them is where do they park their cars? They're parking their cars in the intermodal transfer facility, which we got basically $9 million from the U.S. government, and it's never gonna be an intermodal transfer facility because it's not intermodaling anything. In fact, we've got an elevator shaft in, in the way of them doing intermodaling. I think this is good. I like the apartments. I'm a little torqued at the fact that they're parking in the intermodal transfer facility, but let them do that, and if that's what you wanna use it for, that's fine. But these are good people, they're educated, they wouldn't be living there if they couldn't pay it, they wouldn't be looking for this living wage because they, like I say, they already have a living wage, so I think it's good. If they wanna put more there, that's fine, and it would be nice to have some businesses in there too, since that's what supposedly UP is, University, the, the city. So if you wanna go to UP Place, you can go over to Gig Harbor because that's where they have University Place City Centers over there. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna do, well, before the lightning rounds, we're gonna do two yes or no questions. So I'm gonna give each candidate two cards, one of which says yes and one of which says no, and I don't know if I'll be able to read them, but we'll announce it, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll announce them if I can see them. Okay. First yes or no question. Should the UP City Council pass a resolution calling for a U.S. constitutional amendment to overturn the Citizens United decision? Yes or no?
Me?
All of you, same time.
Well...
Just no, you hold up the card. That's all, no talking. Do we have a no?
That's no.
No? Yes? And I can't see you.
Okay, no.
No, okay. The next yes or no question. Are you supporting gravel mining in University Place? Yes? No? No? And no? Okay, so not the same person, but we have three nos and one yes on each. Okay, now we're going, they have a bunch of questions about what you would do if you were on the council. So since I'd like to get through several of them, we're gonna do 30 seconds on each one. So Mr. Chenier is first to answer. What do the concepts of openness and transparency mean to you regarding UP Government?
As far as openness and transparency, I think we've been major, major improvements in that. You know, one of the things I, we've done recently that I just thought off the top of my head is we cut a significant amount of executive meetings. Before I got on council, there was tons of them. Those have come to almost a stop, and quite frankly, I have to thank our city attorney, Steve Victor, for that. The other thing is, is that one of, as I recently helped pass an ordinance that we are going to be having the coffee with council again in the civic building, and that will be starting shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
Thank you. Openness and transparency would allow the citizens to know what's really happening in front of their council. As it is today, frankly, I don't think it's well done. I don't think that you can sit in that room and really know what's going on. I've been in over 1,000 council meetings. In UP, I have a hard time, I understand what's happening there, but I can't imagine a citizen is going to figure that out. They, we need to do better at that. We need to explain what's going on, we need to explain the reasons. That is, I think, one of our, one of the challenges that council has.
Mr. Molnow.
Openness, that's, that's a joke as far as UP is concerned. In fact, when you bring up a question or you go over to the council and you ask them a question, if you start to ask the question, they don't like it. They say your three minutes are up, even though my stopwatch said there's only like 30 seconds. They haven't a clue as to what openness is. When I, when the city itself broke my water pipe and I went over to give them a bill, which is a little over $10,000, they not only wouldn't respond or be open relatively what my options are, but they basically threatened me. Thank you.
Mr. Grassi.
To be open and transparent is first and foremost, not only for me personally, but with the city council. We've, we've made great strides to make sure that happens. One of the, one of those things being UPTV, that was a huge debate, and council was divided on that, whether to broadcast the council meetings, but we decided to do it, and I think it's been great. The agendas are online, all of our city ordinances are online. We, we have a policy that if you call into City Hall, it must be responded to within 24 hours. So we've, we really have tried to work very hard on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Worthington is first on this one, and it's about if elected, and two of you were already on council, but you can take the question to, you know, how do you work with others? So if elected, what would you do to help ensure that you integrate smoothly with the other six council members?
What I would do, I've already started to do, which is meet individually with council members and help to understand what's their interest points and share some of my interest points. But similarly, if elected, I would continue that process and work in building relationships that we can then work together on to work on issues of importance that we share. That's really how the work gets done, and I'm experienced doing, doing that. I'm looking forward to doing that with our council members here in UP. It's reaching out, it's developing relationship, and it's understanding where their interests are, and it works.
Thank you. Mr. Molnow.
Yes, I think it would be pretty easy. One of the things that you have to do, which they don't do now, is if we have different people on the city council, we have different experiences, minor construction and travel and, and things like that, and some of them have, have not done that. Allowing them to know what your experience is and based on the problem that you are encountering here and/or an idea, why that idea is not good or if it's bad, and to let them know why, the reasons, and what the impact it'll have on the people and the businesses and the traffic and all the other problems that we have and the money. Thank you. Carl Molnow.
Mr. Grassi.
In the 18 years, 18-plus years that I've worked on the city council, I've never had a person that I haven't been able to get along with, never had a problem with a staff member. I love people, I love solving problems, and I've learned early on that unresolved conflict only festers and causes problems. So sometimes you just have to be direct, you're not always gonna agree with your colleagues, but if you sit down, you look them in the eye, you talk about it, and you make a decision, you move forward. So I, it's just something that you have to work at and make a priority. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Sure. You know, one of the things I did when I was on coun, before I got on council, is I met with everybody on council that I could, and we communicated, we talked about the different issues, we talked about what, you know, what was important to them. I gave one example, two years ago Kent Keel was, was elected to city council, and I tried talking to Kent a little bit, but, you know, we hit, we just never were able to communicate. And the first few months, because of that communication, you know, we had some difference opinion. I have a great, outstanding work in relationship with Kent Keel, far better than when I started, and I'm very proud of that, and no matter who is elected on council, I'll be more than happy to work with them.
Thank you. Okay. So now we're going back to the original order, so Worthington, and then we come down this way again. We're still in the 30 seconds, and if you can do it in less, that's even better. In this litigious world, how would the threat of legal action affect your decisions as a council member? Go.
Thank you. You know, I, it is something you need to consider, but you really need to consider not so much that your decision is going to cause a legal action, it's your actions that cause legal action. If you follow the right process, if you've made it for the right reasons, if you've got a decision based on values that's wrapped around what matters in your community, you're just fine. The challenge is making sure your actions don't break some of the rules, and if you know how to do business, and I do, that won't be a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
We have always, since I've been in the city, had one policy, and making sure that when we pass anything, we know that we're not gonna turn around and somebody's gonna file a lawsuit against us. And a common comment I will use when we're passing an ordinance is I'll look across to our city attorney, and I'll say, "Steve, are we gonna have any problems with this ordinance?" And thank goodness, we have a very smart attorney who knows that we are doing the right decisions when we pass ordinances. So no matter what, no matter in this litigious world, if you're doing things the right way, you're doing things with the right process, and you have the right people and your staff, you will not have litigious issues.
Mr. Grassi.
One example that comes to mind was one of our last developers for Town Center who threatened the city with a legal suit if we canceled the agreement, and it was, it still strikes my soul on that one because it was a three, four vote, and I, I worked very strongly on that one to fight that because I didn't believe the city should pay the developer to leave town. Unfortunately, it was a four to three vote, and that happened, but it's still today is very vivid in my mind because we had done nothing wrong, I believe he would have lost. Thank you.
Mr. Molnow.
Yes, I think it actually is, is pretty good, pretty easy to figure this thing out. If we're going to have a lawsuit against us, it's a lot of times cheaper to go ahead and capitulate and go ahead and pay the money, and we got an excellent lawyer in Steve Victor. Steve Victor has worked for the city of Tacoma for many, many years. He knows what he's doing, and so talking to Steve Victor, finding out all the problems and all the possibilities, he's got it. So if the people, i.e. the council members, aren't smart enough to follow that direction and do something stupid and vote in the wrong way, then basically we're losing more money than we're always losing. Thank you, Carl Molnow.
Thank you. Okay. So Mr. Chenier goes, wait. Yes, Mr. Chenier goes first this time. Council meetings seem to be more about personalities than issues. Please give us one suggestion which would help the council behave in a more civil and productive manner. Just one.
Well, quite frankly, I think we have been, for a long time, been behaving well, like any council meeting. There's at times, you're gonna have personal opinion, you're gonna have strong wills, it will come out. There's never a perfect council out there that will never have that issue. But I think for the most part, we've worked very well together. We don't always agree, but we do learn to get along, and that's what you want out of your council. If you go in there with personal agendas, if you go in there with personal issues, if you go in there with personal things that, you know, somebody wants you to do their way no matter what, you may have problems, but if you work together as a council, if you find the differences, you can accomplish anything, and I'm very proud of our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi.
I would say first and foremost, it's, it's having a healthy respect for your colleagues. You're not always going to agree, but you can respectfully disagree. Don't carry grudges. Once a vote is over, you have to let it go, you have to move forward, and over the years, I've just learned that you have to count to 10, sometimes to 20, sometimes to 50, before you speak.
Thank you. Mr. Molnow.
Basically, I agree with Grassi on this thing. See, it's pretty easy. If anybody on the council can just talk to each other, talk over the problems, see what those problems are, and work them out, and even though you may not agree with them, or maybe you really badly don't agree with them, you still can be a friend even though you don't agree. In fact, I like all these people, but some of the ideas that they've come up with and things they've done over the years are just plain not very smart. Thank you.
Mr. Worthington. And that's not how you do it. Oh, have we all answered this?
I haven't answered yet, but if you'd like, I will.
Please.
Thank you. So with regards to that, you know, as an outside observer, one who's experienced a local government, I, I do feel as though the University Place Council is trying hard, but they need to try harder. There is some, some aspect of the personalities that are coming into the room that is really affecting some of the decision processes, I believe, and they need to, I would suggest, you say one thing. Well, the one thing I would suggest is that they ask, is that comment really gonna contribute to the outcome? Is that really going to be something that moves this issue in a direction that is going to be productive? Because I believe at times, there's some comments from certain individuals don't necessarily add to the discussion, they detract, they become more impediments than help. So there, I think there's certainly room for improvement, and it would be my point to help make those improvements.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the next question, Mr. Grassi's gonna answer first, but we're gonna do another yes or no question. So Mr. Grassi, you're gonna go first, and we'll go down the way we've been going, but then you'll get another real question. You can answer first. So if elected, will you run for another office before completing this term?
I have no plans at this time to...
Okay, we'll take that as a no.
No.
Mr. Molnow, no. Okay? Mr. Worthington?
No.
Mr. Chenier?
No.
Okay, you got that. Okay, so now we're back to one minute for answers. Yay. In University Place, property taxes pay for public safety. The city's property tax revenue grows approximately 1% per year, which is less than the average increase in the city's police contract with Pierce County. If elected this time, how would you propose that the city address public safety in University Place? Mr. Grassi.
Then I'm going first. It is a challenge. We've been, we've started this discussion, there's a lot more to talk about because the county contract goes up 3%, and as stated, property tax is limited to 1%. We have continued to, and we will strive, to find creative ways to avoid further taxation, but quite frankly, it's a community conversation that has to be had because public safety has always been a number-one priority, and it needs to remain a number-one priority. So this will be something that is gonna have a lot of discussion, a lot of debate in the months ahead as we, you know, one of the things with Town Center properties now starting to sell, that's gonna help move that date out. But the reality is, is that it's, we're getting to a point where even though every cent of your property tax that comes into the city is dedicated to your safety, that line is getting narrower and narrower. So we do need to talk about it and be creative in the way we handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molnow.
Public safety, police department, so on, I'm not really happy with the services that we're getting with our public safety because when the, I turned in the drug dealers that live next to my house, and they did a SWAT team thing after they shot up my house, and the police department didn't even appear. In fact, when they made four 911 calls, they, nobody even showed up. It was five days later that I called them again to come over and maybe pick up some of the bullets and the, and the cartridges. Never heard anything. As a matter of fact, the police department and Jennifer Hale said it never occurred. It did occur. My suggestion is that we partner up or look at and talk to seriously with the city of Lakewood and their police department and getting our services from them rather than getting screwed on the ones that we're getting through the county right now. I'm not real happy with that, and I think we should change. In fact, when the police chief, who works for Pierce County Sheriff, threatens me on paper, in voice, and personally, I don't think that's a good idea, even going to the, Carl Molnow.
Mr. Worthington.
Yes, the, I think this is one of our larger, largest challenges in the near term, and that is how to continue to pay for the current level of police service, which we've already seen a reduction in a few years ago. It is a, a big challenge. One of the key pieces, I believe, is to grow the economy here, because given that, if we can make the pie bigger, our slice of that pie, our piece of the taxes gets a little bit bigger as well, and from that, we can then pay for the services that our community needs and relies on. That's really what it comes down to. If we can't do that, then the community has to make a really interesting and, I think, difficult choice because they either need a new revenue source or they need to reduce services somewhere. It's clear that in, by 2018, the city goes red, which is to say into negative numbers over this issue. We need to get it sorted out, and we, the community needs to be involved in that process soon.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Yeah, this is an issue we've already started the early process of tackling. This is an issue that we are gonna have to discuss with the community about because Mr. Grassi's correct, when you're only getting 1% increase in property taxes and the, sorry, costs go up 3%, obviously, you're, you're not catching up and you're falling behind. The question is gonna be what we have, ask the community, what direction they wanna go. Maybe over, over time, we have more revenue sources coming in, we have, the economy picks up, and we don't have to go out and maybe look at a tax, a tax levy. Maybe it's possible we may have to, but it's something that's a serious discussion that we as a council have started the process, we as a council will work with the community, we as a council will come back and discuss with the public about, and then in the end, we will make a final decision on what needs to be done. But that's a part of being responsible government. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be the last question. Mr. Molnow will answer it first, 60 seconds. Economic development as a mechanism to generate revenue to pay for city services has long been a priority for the city council. What ideas for economic development do you think need to be explored or emphasized over the next four years?
The next four years, we have to look at really helping the businesses that wanna come into the city of University Place, can afford to come into the city of University Place, because right now, as soon as they come in and wanna even talk about getting a place in University Place to sell where their goods are, they're hit with a impact fee, a traffic impact fee. What is that? We already paid for all the traffic problems we have with our gas taxes and things like to build, build the city streets. We've even closed up some of the streets, 67th and Circuit, we put a roundabout in the middle of one of them, and we got FANA and all kinds of stuff in the middle. We have to open up and let the streets, get that crap out of the middle of, of Bridgeport Way so you can see any of the sides, you can turn left and right to get into these places. There's businesses wanting out of business because they got those in the way, and we should take them out. We put them there, we get, get them the hell out of there. That bank went out of business. In fact, Mr. Grassi could have had a nice place when we had a, a forest over there that went out of business because they couldn't turn it. That is just ridiculous. Carl Molnow, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question for me?
Sure. Economic development as a mechanism to generate revenue to pay for city services has long been a priority for the city council. What ideas for economic development do you think need to be explored or emphasized over the next four years?
Thank you. The city, for a good deal of time, has been focused primarily on retail development, which is a good approach. It does provide revenue through sales taxes, but I believe that we need to diversify further. We need to also look at services and growing services in the community. Frankly, our service sector has done pretty well. We have had medical and dental and other related services do pretty good in UP. We've demonstrated that we can do, do well with there. I think if we can push further with that, though, and get some more office activity, back office activities, we can, we can grow our economy in a different way. I believe similarly, we also need to provide for some opportunity to update some light manufacturing in the community. No, I'm not talking smoke stacks, but I am talking a business park or some other facility that allows somebody to move from a garage into a small space that they can do some light manufacturing and assembly work on. That's how you grow business. That's very difficult in our community. We need to be able to provide for that kind of activity if we wish to have a broader economy that can deliver the services the residents need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. You know, economic development is great, but we did focus on businesses that create sales tax revenue, and why is that? Because we have no business and operations tax for the city of University Place. Now, they may have it with the state, you may have the county, but we don't have it here with the city, so we're very limited as far as what streams we have. Property taxes, sales taxes, fees and permitting. Because of that, we still need to continue to focus on businesses that create sales tax revenue. This is gonna be done over time, and I'm very happy to say, when you have recalibrated the traffic impact fees and gave credit for business that create sales tax revenue, and we recalibrated the bit, the direction on Town Center to give more options for businesses coming in, we have already been doing that, to focus on getting more city res, revenue into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi.
Thank you. We need to make sure that the community hears loud and clear that we are business friendly, we want to be business friendly, we welcome new business in this community. We've had the discussion over the years about a business and occupation tax. We don't have one, and I don't believe that that's something that will be looked at in the future. Our neighbor to the north and south, Tacoma and Lakewood, do. So we're much more competitive in that area, and we've seen a lot of new businesses just in the last year choose University Place because of not having a business and occupation tax. We need to help recruit business, but even more importantly, we need to help maintain our current businesses that are here, and we need to do that by supporting them shop local, because we still have a huge sales tax leakage when our dollars are spent outside the community. So if we support our current businesses and new businesses that are, businesses that are gonna be coming, we will have a viable business community and, and strong economic development here. Thanks.
Thank you all for answering all these questions. It's time for closing statements, and there is one question I did not ask, because I assume you will include this in your closing statement, which is why are you the best choice for the position you're seeking? Okay, each candidate may have one minute to make a statement. Mr. Chenier will go first, and then Mr. Worthington, and then Mr. Molnow, and we finish with Mr. Grassi. So, your closing statement, please, Mr. Chenier.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody here tonight in the audience, and I want to thank those at home that watched tonight's forum. When I was elected four years ago, my campaign was themed was "New Ideas and Better Solutions", solutions, excuse me. I feel this has been accomplished. Whether supporting opening up drive-through options south of Town Center, adjusting and lowering traffic impact fees to give credit for businesses, recalibrating our direction for Town Center while still protecting the vision, working together with cities like Furcrest and Tacoma for multi-jurisdictional street projects on Mildred, next to Narrows Plaza, or 56th Circuit Corridor, I worked on these items and used some simple philosophies. I will support new business growth in University Place, but I will still protect our residential neighborhoods. I'll be open to change to help foster new development, but I will not pass their costs onto our residents, and I will continue to be there for you to discuss any issues or questions that you may have. My name is Eric Chenier, and I ask for your vote this fall for reelection to the University Place City Council, position three, because I want to be there to keep our city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worthington.
Yes, I have prepared for this for a long time, it seems to be. I have a master's degree in public administration that's helped with my education, but more importantly, I have 25 years of working in local governments, facing some of the problems that, that you face, that our community faces here. But that isn't just really it either. I'm also a small business person. I have owned my own businesses, I've operated them, I know what it is to make payroll, and I know what it is to make a profit, and I've done that for other people as well. I mention that because it's a special perspective that you get in that setting, and it's one that I think, with, combined with local government experience, that is a unique perspective. I think I can help this community, I believe I can help the council, and I believe when you look and compare me to my opponent, that you're going to agree that Steve Worthington is worth your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molnow, your closing statement, please.
What do I think about University Place? I moved to University Place out of Lakewood because I thought it was a good place to live, and I think it still is a good place to live. But we have to get real about the fact that we're in big trouble money-wise. A, a news organization came here to, to talk about University Place and the big debt, and some of the other cities in this country have big debt. One of the big things we have to realize that we don't really have any money, we can't borrow any more money, we went on raise your taxes, we're already higher taxes than other places, and that we have to open up the streets. We have to maybe take out the, when people come into business here, to come in and buy things, you need to have an easy ingress and a good outgress. When you make it hard for those people to come in and park and see what's going on, that's not a really good idea. They can park in the intermodal traffic facility, but how are they gonna get to the businesses that are across the street? We gotta really think, business is our best upcoming, and we've got to remember that we do not spend a lot of money on needless junk like more. Thank you, Carl Molnow.
Thank you. Mr. Grassi.
Well, what an exciting time it is to live in University Place right now. We've got new construction, new project, new streetscape and lighting, road projects, all under construction right now with much more to come. We're just 20 months away from being in the world's eyes hosting the 2015 U.S. Open, where the world will be focused on University Place. It's a marketing that you couldn't afford to pay, so we're very excited about all of that. Your trust over the years in council decisions, your faith with, being with us as we've struggled through the Town Center project has been greatly appreciated, and I'm proud to tell you that just this afternoon, just a few hours ago, we signed a lease, and Grassi's is coming to Tacoma, because I felt it was time to make a commitment here in the city that I've lived and served. So we're very excited about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The candidates for University Place City Council, position four, are Carl J. Molnow and Ken J. Grassi. The candidates for position three are Eric Chenier and Steve Worthington, and applause I want to thank the candidates both for running for office and for being here to share their views this evening. For further information about the candidates, please visit vote411.org, put in your address, and you can see the candidates' answers to some other questions. I also wish to thank Ann Williams, the timekeeper, Laura Gardner for sorting questions, and Linda Sees of UP for distributing and collecting cards, as well as for organizing the forum, the camera crew from Pierce County Television, those who asked questions, and all who attended. Please continue doing all that you can to make your vote an educated one. Now, don't forget to use that vote. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. You should receive your ballot in the mail around October 19th. It must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by November 5th. Also on your ballot will be two state initiatives and five advisory votes. For more information about those issues, read your voter's guide, or come to a ballot issues forum presented by the University of Washington Tacoma Student Union and the League of Women Voters on Monday, October 7th, from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. at William Philip Hall on the UW Tacoma campus. Thank you. Please stay and socialize with the candidates and each other for a while, and good night.